Good evening, everyone. April twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Board of Select Meeting, and as a customer, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing is in the agenda, planning board vacancy. Join me as the planning board to conduct interviews. I will appoint vacancy member candidates. And Mr. O'Connell?
I'd like to call for motion to open the planning board meeting.
Sub move second.
Any discussion? I will call for the vote, and I will use those attendance, so they will know who was here. Phil?
Bill I.
Liz is off today?
He might.
Associate?
Aye.
He might.
Nick I.
Bill I. That motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, and we do.
We do. Where we let him? We're just, we're going to take five minutes for one other thing.
Okay.
For, for Mr. Hennessy, and then we'll move on. All right?
That's fine. And Mr. Hennessy?
Not sure if anybody was aware, Chief and Deputy.
Yes.
You guys had a very busy Easter weekend.
Yeah, we, yes.
Just, just slightly.
Just slightly.
So I just wanted to, to take a minute just to recognize the actions in Bellingham Fire. Extremely busy and dangerous Easter weekend with the, the massive fire that we had. Multiple calls.
Yes.
High winds, accidents. You guys are great. I put the scanner on for a few minutes on my phone. Chief, if you want, just briefly go into it?
Yeah, it was, it's been very busy, both fire and EMS over the last couple of weeks. It's really picking up. Sunday created Easter Sunday was a challenging day. It came in as a normal routine call. Both the deputy and I were listening. We were chatting back and forth. We heard the captain kind of escalated a little bit. And at that point there, we're like, all right, we need to take a ride. And when we pulled in, it's like, wow. So on top of two, ten thousand yard piles that were on fire, there was an excavator on top of one of the piles. There's a wheel loader down further, and then six and a half acres going all at the same time. So our resources were taxed. We used fourteen mutually communities from Westboro all the way, far as north as Westboro, and as far as Means Field on the south side. Humans work by everybody. Everybody did outstanding work, and I hope two of the residents are listening. If not, I hope we can find out who they are. The crews, we got back to the station. Had to be about now quarter, four, four o'clock. Somebody, a resident driving by, saw the crew out. We had kind of divided everybody up. They were cleaning hose. Drop by, I don't know, half a dozen large pizzas off here. Great for watching. Thank you. Deb and I got back. It had to be, at four thirty, quarter to five, a resident pulls in with a full, large cooked ham for the crew.
Oh, that was nice.
We get, we don't know who they were. We want to say thank you. If anybody in the audience knows, or if the public is listening, please, thank you. It did not go unnoticed. So, you know, by the time we got done cleaning up, I think the deputy and I both left around five thirty. The crew still had the night to go. They had to mutually to rent them for a brush fire.
Fifteen minutes after they got pulled back in service, they went out like right away to turn on the brush fire, so.
I think they ran right up until about midnight that night. So, and while we were at the fire, they had seven other calls in between. We had another brush fire, a shed fire, medicals. I'll leave it at that. So it was, it was very busy.
I just, I just want to bring you guys in and just say thank you.
Thank you.
It does not go unnoticed, believe me. You did great work as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again.
The length of time that Channel Five and other helicopters flying over head of my house and watching it all. I was a little disappointed because I was watching all the news channels, and it was just a little blip. I'm like, come on, there's a lot more going on there than a three second blip, and you didn't even see the fire. They just showed the big piles.
Yeah, that was it.
I was really disappointed in the news, honestly.
You did great work.
Great, great work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks again. So.
So call Liz up. She's the only candidate that we have for the vacancy.
Yep.
Liz, you get the hot seat.
For punishment. Hello, everyone. Good to see you. Hi.
Good to have you.
Yes, yes. No, I appreciate you having me come in.
I'm in B. It's, I personally, you know, what video I think most of us did, you know, it's, you want to say good things or?
Yeah, I mean, I think I know most of you at this point. I've been in town thirteen years. I think I started volunteering on various boards and subcommittees, probably seventeen or eighteen. So, you know, several, eight years at this point. Currently Chair of the zoning board. I've been the alternate member on planning for the last year. Was previously on the planning board. I'm on our zoning bylaw subcommittee, helped chair the NBTA subcommittee, so on and so forth. So, you know, happy, happy to continue serving the town.
We, I, I personally appreciate that, and I think we all do.
Yeah, we give you kudos for doing everything you do, believe me.
I have no question.
I don't either.
Any of the planning board members?
Any, yeah, that's true. Questions? No. Anyway. Users. We.
I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely.
To appoint Liz Berthellet to the planning board. And this, in this term, will go until, what, June of twenty twenty six, correct?
So it's not just the one year and have to rerun? It's the two years?
You'll, you'll finish Brian's, Brian, he resigns, you'll finish his entire term. So, were you aware of that?
No.
I think it's.
That's what I was told.
That's the way it should go.
Well, what, what, what we've done in the past is it's until the next election.
Okay.
There is some gray area there with regard to the appointment process. We did speak with town council.
Okay.
There's two ways of looking at it. Essentially, what we have done in the past is we have appointed them, and then they would run for the, for the unexpired term. But town councils did say, I mean, the way we've done it is the way that we're describing. You know, she would, she would run next year, but town council did say there would be nothing to prevent the board from appointing her for the remainder of the unexpired term, was what she had said. So there's some gray area there. It's, there's nothing, as far as town council was concerned, that would prevent you from appointing her for the remainder of the term. But town council did ask, how have we done it in the past? And we did say typically what we've done. So it's really, you could, in fact, appoint for the remainder of the term if you chose to.
And Mr. Hennessy is going to mention something, I think. What would you run?
I'm okay with either. I think, you know, it depends on maybe here from the planning board as well. I don't, I, I'm happy to do either.
I, I.
Well, my, my comment is this, that we have an election. You're saying this coming election. She doesn't have time to pull paper.
No, no, no.
No.
So when was Brian's term up?
He has two years.
Oh, so that's my misunderstanding. I thought he only had till twenty twenty six.
No, he goes till twenty twenty.
Because you and I had discussed this. That's why I brought that up.
He has until twenty twenty.
For me, I think it's instead of, it would go to twenty twenty six, not to twenty twenty seven.
Which is historically what we.
If that's what we've historically done, what I didn't want to have happen is a pointer in the, here we are a couple of months later.
Okay.
No, I don't want that at all.
So I'll, I'll second.
Yeah, so my motion would be to run through June or to the election in twenty twenty six.
Sure.
Obviously, I thought we sort of mentioned was going to add something.
The only reason, well, when I was town clerk, so there you go. I'm going to go back to my years as town clerk. We always, they always finished whatever term was left. That was how we did it.
Not for elected, for appointed that way, but for elected, it's, what we have done is, is have them serve until the next election.
Oh, I'm just thinking of the continuity. So now you're talking about someone who's only going, who's, she's going to get in the middle of everything, and then where she's going to have to run for election, and to me, that's my opinion, it breaks up the continuity of the board. I think it's very important that if Liz is in the middle of all of the, and you've been doing it anyways, you know, in the middle, and you've got all these big projects coming, then.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just, I feel there's a continuity that should be kept.
The only thing that I'll say to that is, I don't disagree with you, but had, had the, the community had known that that was the case, we may have had more than Liz applied because we have several candidates running, wanting that position, right? So my only concern is to those folks out there that want a seat on the planning board. Had they known, they may have applied along with Liz and had to go through this process. So to be fair, I, and, and listen, I think the world of Liz. This is not about Liz. This is about process. If this is what we've done in the past, in the last meeting, we got all hung up on process. I want to stick with process and be consistent. I think it should be through June of twenty twenty six election. That's just my, that's being consistent with process.
So the motion stands then, and then we got first, Mr. O'Connell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Connell. Since we'll be voting on this, my opinion is the motion you made for twenty six is correct. And comments that, you know, about the continuity. Liz has been part of us for a while. You know, she took a brief respite for a couple of years. And she's been in the moment for a while.
I know that, yeah.
So, you know, I, I don't think we'll lose the continuity.
Okay.
But I think we should follow our practice.
Yeah, okay.
I know it is vacillating from one to another, but I think it is twenty six. I also think in the back of my head, there may be a caveat on that that the only reason it wouldn't be the twenty six if two other people are running for the office. I think you don't want three people running the same year for a position, and that's never happened. So I think the twenty six is the right, right there.
The correct year.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, morning, twenty six. May I clarify? So, agree with you on that, but when the time comes up and that seat becomes open, it's, it would be finish off Brian's.
My, yes, correct.
Yeah, so it's correct.
Right, so it's going to be a one year term.
It's like when, it's going to be like when you ran.
Right.
Yeah, and I've been in that, I finished the six months myself, when I first got on the board. I finished a six month situation like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so similar situations.
Similar situation, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, well, if there are no other comments, so we have a motion. We have first, we have second. All in favor, say.
We're going to vote.
Uh, Jen I.
Mike I.
Don I.
Aye.
Don I. Bill I.
He might.
Nick I. Bill I.
Today, are we going to close this part of it? Do you have to close your meeting?
I do have to close the meeting. Iron hit a motion to close the meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Bill I.
Liz I.
He might.
Nick I.
Bill I. That motion passes unanimously. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Best of luck with the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah. The next on our meeting, in, according, according to the, with Mass General Law, Chapter one six six, Section twenty two, and the Bellingham Court of Bylaws, Bellingham Select Board will hold public hearing on Monday, April twenty, twenty twenty five at seven P M. In the municipal center, our can look meeting room on the petition of national with for plan number three, one, zero, eight, six, six, four, seven, to install an intermediate SO code on Fairway Drive, across the street from the solar project upgrade number eight. And the current service route was too far for a mid-span connection, and I believe Mr. Michael LeParence is here. How are you doing?
Michael LeParence, I don't know, hotel of national grade. Pretty much as, as the petition states, the service to this house is, is very long. And on top of it, it's in the middle of two pole span, so when they called to have their service replaced for this job, I'm the cleanup and make it safe. So a pole is being requested on town property to carry it across the road. There's no sag there. And also, they'll take it to the house, they'll make it safe there as well.
Does anybody have any questions from the audience?
This is standard protocol.
Yep, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
You still moved?
You got, you got first, we got second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit.
Chair motion to approve national grade petition as presented to the board.
Second. We got first, we got second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit.
You're all set?
All set. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next one is going to be a bid award, Scott Cemetery, Colimbarium four. Is that you, Jesse?
Yes, it is me, Mr..
How you doing?
Great, how are you tonight?
Good, good, good. Good to see you. Let me, let me speed my screen on. There you go. Now I can't see full set. Okay, what was yours, my friend?
Okay, what we have here tonight is a bid award recommendation. The DPW did advertise bids for the fourth column barium at Scott Cemetery. We did receive two bids for this effort. The low bidder bidder for this project was Watertown Engineering, who has supplied the other three column area at this site. So we, we would expect similar results from what we've experienced with them in the past. And all in all, the, what we've received from Watertown Engineering has been fantastic. So we have in front of you tonight are an award for that effort.
I, I'll make more. I moved that contract twenty twenty five dash S C C four Scott Cemetery Colimbarium four reward to the low bidder Watertown Engineering Corp. of Whitman. It says Whitman, Mass. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
I did second. We have first, we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit. Next one is, I believe that's you, Jesse, all right, as well?
That is.
All way including various streets.
Yes, very, very excited to, to have the bids out, or the project bid for various streets to be paved throughout Bellingham. We did open the bids on April seventeenth. Great, great turnout. Total of ten bids were received for the effort. The low bidder on this PJ Keating unfortunately was disqualified due to exceeding a three percent mobilization maximum fee. So the bid award is recommended to the second low bidder, A F Amarillo and Sons out of Worcester. We had been in contact with legal counsel on this for this disqualification, to make sure we were in a, a good position, good standing. And the recommendation was to proceed with the second low bid on this. Both, both of these bids were very competitive, very close, but because of that exceedance of the three percent on mobilization, we did have to disqualify PJ Keating for breaking that threshold.
This, this chair, I will contract two zero two five R I V S M P B roadway, roadway improvements, various streets be able to A F Amarillo and Sons of Worcester as presented by the DPW.
Second.
I have a question. Hey, hey, Jesse, can you explain to me what that three percent disqualification means? I, I have no idea what that means, and if anybody's watching, they may be interested to learn a little bit more. Can you explain it?
Absolutely. So the three percent maximum mobilization, well, mobilization first and foremost is the fee that a vendor or a contractor can charge for the setup, the delivery of equipments, basically the prep work and setting up and breaking down for their actual equipment and personnel. Mass DOT has actually put together a standard to ensure that mobilization isn't inflated to a point where they're basically front-loading their charges without providing a product. So putting a cap at three percent on that, we, we ensure that the project total mobilization does not exceed a fair number for what that cost might be to set up and basically have the equipment brought to the site as well as the, the personnel associated with the project. So it ensures that Bellingham has a fair price that they're paying for that initial startup.
So that number, three percent, is that based on the one point two four million bid? So their mobilization number was, was greater than three percent of the one point two, basically?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jesse. If we have no other questions, I believe we have a motion. We have first, and we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I savit.
For the record, the bid specification was extremely clear that exceeding three percent will result in rejection of your bid. They just made a mistake.
They made a mistake.
It was a good company, too.
Yeah, we thought this is with them in the past.
We have. They did a great job on North Main Street, but Amarillo has done some great work for us as well. So we're fortunate from that perspective, but Jesse did a good job pushing it out with town council as well to make sure we were on solid ground. Thanks, Jesse.
Great work. So our next one is on the agenda. Regal Cinemas Incorporated change of offices application.
So the Regal Cinemas is just changing their officers. There's no beneficial interest change. They're going from four officers to two officers, and this is part of the process that's to come to the local licensing authority and then go to the ABC.
Yeah. And do we need to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the Regal Cinemas application as per our agenda.
We have first, we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit. We need to sign that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the annual town warrant for our town election on June third, two thousand twenty five. Polls open from seven A M. to eight P M. For the following purpose, to cast their votes for the following office, one member of the select board, one member town moderator, one member town clerk, four members constable, one member library board of trustees, two members planning board, two members school committee, and one member housing authority.
Third, third. We have first, we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit. Insert action. Thank you. Motion passed. The next one is going to be a appointment of board of registers. It's.
Do you want me to explain?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
So this is the, it's just the term, the three-year term for the Democratic seat on the board of registers is up this year, and we did have the incumbent reapply, Mr. Bill Disanat. But we also had a new applicant, Sarah Brown, who the board interviewed last meeting. And so we just need to appoint one of the two for the three-year term on the board of registers.
Mr. Chair, then make a motion to appoint Mr. Bill Bassett. The Bellingham Board of Registers.
Second.
We got first, we got, we got first, we got second. Any questions? Anybody? No comments?
I'm just trying to step up and apply anyways.
Yep. So we have first, we have second in the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savit. Congrats. That's, yeah, okay. Then the next one's going to be voted on March seventeen and April seventeenth minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the minutes from March seventeenth and April seventh as presented to the board.
And.
We have first, we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next one is on the agenda. Old Business. Anything on the Old Business? Perfect. And then, so the next one is.
I do have a question. I just wanted to say, sorry, Facebook announced about July fourth. I think that's awesome. Thank you very much. I've wanted on July fourth. Are there anything, anything else going on that day or that weekend? I'm just curious, is it going to be like the past or just fireworks? It's a concert. So it'll be a concert that evening. So it'll be similar to how we used to do. Oh, we used to do it. Yeah.
When details become available, we'll update that, but we weren't, we were not solid on what was planned.
And we do want the, the youth groups and the nonprofits in town to get ahold of us to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate and, you know, raise some money for their, their operations.
Like is there as well? They can just connect to your.
That's great. Yeah.
That's awesome. That's exciting. Thanks for reminding us, Mr. Martinez. New Business, special town meeting discussion and vote, I believe. That's, could you explain that?
Absolutely. Our attorney, Sharon Everett, had gotten ahold of me. And in, in order to acquire two parcels of the property associated with the Maple Gate sale of land, it does require acceptance by town meeting. And rather than wait till November and, and risk losing those parcels, it made more sense to just schedule it. It's a fourteen day notice that's required. If the board so votes, it's a thirty day requirement for special town meeting, but the board can go ahead and issue it in fourteen days if it deems it to be an emergency. An emergency is, is somewhat of a, a loose term in the eyes of town council. They basically said, if you're risking losing a twenty-five acre donation, you can see that as an emergency or something worth scheduling that for. So what we'd like to do is, is have a special town meeting at seven twenty-five. So it starts five minutes before the annual, and obviously the annual will be delayed. Town moderator may very well open the seven twenty-five special town meeting and continue it until the conclusion of the annual town meeting. But either way is, is fine, obviously, but the important thing is to get this matter heard so that we can accept those, those parcels of property.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to schedule a special town meeting on seven twenty-five due to an emergency of losing a, I don't know, donated parcel of land.
We have motion.
You said seven twenty-five?
Yeah, seven twenty-five.
Seven thirty is the regular one.
Right.
So we have first.
Second.
Yeah, we got second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I savit. I'm actually really excited about that. I think that we all are, you know, it's, that was a.
That was a big work.
I'm going to have you sign the warrant that will be posted.
Yeah, well, that's going to be nice in the, in the future, what we want to build.
No doubt.
I have something for new business. So we have some executive session minutes from, you know, over the past few months.
Yeah.
And we'd like to vote on them next week on the May fifth meeting.
Yeah.
So I can't email them out, so when the board can just stop by at some point this week and initial them and review them. And Dennis and I will look at them and speak to town council and people's ones. We can approve all of them, and we'll just, we'll determine which ones can be approved and released, and which ones can be approved but not be released.
Right.
Certainly, the ones associated with the conversation with regard to this would be something that you consider leaving.
I'd like to thank, we have big news in Bellingham. Opening day is Saturday for baseball. And we got a, we got an invitation from Carrie Carl. So I'm excited to go to that. I went to last year's. It's a great time and good, good to see baseball coming back. Can't wait to be there.
You're a marvel of charm.
Yeah. And again, four hundred plus.
Yeah.
In the, in the program, that program just continued to stay strong all these years. It's just incredible.
You coached, I think, right?
I, I was on the board for years. I coached for years, but when my boys were that age and even my daughter.
I think all our kids.
Yeah, at one point, I coached them. It's fun, but it's, some towns, you see this major drop in youth baseball. Bellingham is just continues to be as strong as ever. They have a fantastic program, fantastic program for individuals that are suffering from disability or things. They just do a wonderful, wonderful job. And I'd love to see softball get back to where they once were too, when we had thirteen teams in each division. Believe me, when my daughters played, we had literally thirteen teams in different divisions. So we had, we had three, four hundred girls at some point, but now they're, I don't know.
Hopefully it'll come back.
Hopefully it's coming back. I love talking to you.
That's great.
Yeah, I'll be there Saturday. It'll be fun.
Awesome. That's great. Anything else under the new business?
Yep, the men, are we going to do this? No, what's that? Remember Andy?
Oh, Dennis is going to bring that up on your head.
Okay, I was like, it's my last thing on my paper.
So in that case, then, Dennis?
Yeah, so as Mr. Lord of Ash you mentioned, Carolyn must be my lucky charm here. She's been joining me with the negotiations. We, we were able to finish them up, so we had a great conversation with Asme Clerical. And as I said in my notes to the board, they're really the backbone of the municipal center and a lot of the departments that we work in, the library, the DPW, and, and they do great work. And it, it's a, a three percent increase consistent with the other contracts that we have. No language, just a, a very good resolution. I, I think they're pleased and we're happy to get that contract settled, assuming the, the board approves it, it's consistent with what we talked about. And hopefully it'll, it'll, the budget passes that town meeting, and then we're good for three years. So all the contracts on the municipal side will be settled until twenty twenty eight. That's great. Do need a, a vote on that. They already have originals for your signature.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the, uh, Asme, uh, agreement between Asme Council ninety-three, Local Head of Forty-seven Municipal Employees. And kind of Bellingham as presented by the Town Administrator and H I Director.
Thank you, Caroline.
Good job. Thank you very much.
And thanks, Dennis.
Just a couple of other things. Uh, the, the purchase agreement with the, uh, property across the street from the salt fire station. Typically known as the former Beverly Club has been executed. The next step is town meeting funding. So I, I know the fire chief is very pleased, uh, with that as well. The Town Administrator Screening Committee met the last week, uh, had a great meeting. I did attend for most of it. I know Caroline attended as well, and. Here, uh, at work, the, the, uh, profile will be for, for your review next Monday. Uh, Mary O'Carney had sent me a note on that. I hope you reached out to all of you, and, and you'll have that to review as well. Municipal aggregation program, electric program was adopted in twenty seventeen. Um, I asked, uh, Paul Gromer, who works for, uh, Pa- Pa- Power Zini. Uh, Energy to come in and, and give an overview of the program. Um, we're coming up again. Um, this year for another renewal, and there's a lot of misconceptions about, um. At the, the bill, the electric bill that, that people have, and I think it'd be nice to have a presentation from Paul. We've done extremely well with, with the program. I know right now, uh, Constellation is sending flyers out in the mail. Uh, talking about their thirteen point five percent, uh, generation fee locked in for six months, and they'll give you a seventy-five dollar gift card. Which seems enticing since that's about what the towns rate is. But keep in mind, um, it's a seasonal type of adjustment. It goes up big time in the winter, so you take advantage of switching. And then when you try to switch back. To the towns rate, usually it is at least a three-month delay getting back. That's just how long it takes. So. Um, I know, cause I, I've done it in the past. It used to be thirty-six months. You could get, you could lock in a rate for thirty-six months if you just go. To, uh, and Google, uh, comparing, uh, generation rates in Massachusetts. You get all the companies that do it, what their offers are, and you'll see most of them now are six, seven, or nine months maximum. And when you, when you surf or shift around, as much like credit cards, you get that teaser rate, and then it jumps after that. So the municipal aggregation, uh, program, the state enacted legislation to provide for the municipalities to offer these programs. We don't get anything out of it. Uh, residents have the benefit of stability in their, in their rate. And, um, any resident can opt out of it at any time. So it's not like you're locked into it. But Paul's gonna come in next week. Because I will not be here when the new rates come out and, uh, they're advertised in October and they become effective in December. And I want all of you to be up to speed and know exactly what the program is all about. So I think it's important because I have handled that pretty exclusively with Jim Kupfer when Jim was here and, and, uh. I think it's important that, uh, the, the board be made aware of it, and obviously Caroline will be getting up to speed on it as well.
Let's take my program, and it's, um, it's a cool studio guys, and it's, um, I think it was very beneficial for the town all the years. Thanks.
So they'll, they'll, he'll have some information to show exactly what residents have saved. With the program versus what they would have, uh, paid if they stayed with the, with the energy rates provided by EverSource and National Grade. So. Anyway, that, that'll be next week's meeting. That's all that I had.
Anything else, Dennis?
Nope, that's all that I have. I'll check my list real quick. Yep, that's it.
Looks like, you know, it's, uh, that conclude our, uh, agenda for the evening.
They're gonna make a motion, um, to end our meeting at seven thirty-four.
Five minutes delay. I think Michael has the record add.
Anyway, um, so we have a motion, um.
Second.
Perfect. We got first, we got second, all in favor say aye. Aye, savit. Um, have a wonderful evening.
We'll be here next week, though.
Yes.